Okay, we're ready? Okay, we're gonna bring the Lawrence Planning Commission meeting to order. And we're gonna start out with the invocation. Chris is gonna lead us in the invocation.
Loving and gracious God be with us in our deliberations and help us to be wise in the decisions we make for those present and not present.
Amen. Okay, if everybody would stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Meredith, if you wanna start with roll call.
Linda Morrison.
Here.
Christopher Spivey.
Here.
Eric Milam.
Here.
Chad Bennett.
Here.
Ruth Ann Jones. Joseph Fleisch. John Atkins.
Okay, uh, the first, oh, first item, approval of the minutes. We don't have any minutes to approve, but we do.
So, and that was, um...
That was one that was canceled.
That was one that was canceled, um... Make sure it didn't go too far. So, just so that we have it in the records, we have in our minutes. If any question was to come up down the road, this is one that I said, oh, I should've had November on last month, or last week. So, that's why we've got it there, so we can formally show that it was canceled.
Okay.
So, there would be no minutes for it.
Okay. Okay, moving on to the business items. Uh, the first one is PL dash two zero two five zero seven dash zero two. The review of the proposed major subdivision, Silver Oaks Cotages Phase Two and Three. Parcel number one seven six dash zero zero dash zero zero dash zero zero three zero. Diamond Shores Third Review.
So, with this one, we talked about there were some corrections that were needed during the meeting last week. We met Tuesday and got those corrected. David and I were just talking about a couple of things on the prelim plan that'll probably need to be adjusted or just clarified. So, we know that going into it. Um, I do have the whole plan set. David, if you wanna look at on the big screen with it, I'll let you go over kind of what we talked about Tuesday. With that, it's just, it, well, a lot of it was minor corrections. Making sure that the correct utilities were referenced, um, ordinances, the governing ordinances for our jurisdiction had City of Lawrence and not county, state, anything like that with it. Sorry, I'm looking through my notes real quick, just to make sure I'm not missing anything from that. We did get the, the application to submit for zoning appeals for requesting a variance for the open space definition. So, that's in your packet too, just so you see it was submitted and what it is requesting. You don't have any action on that, that is strictly zoning appeals, but we did receive it, which was kind of part of that conditional approval or approval contingent on. I believe concerns on it were that, but David, I'll let you give a little bit more detail as far as the latest update on yet.
David Schwerm with Diamond Shores, representing Silver Oaks Cotages LLC. So, uh, some of the other details we did, mostly it was, uh, like on the utility sheets, we had grand strand specs because we didn't have a copy. So, we renamed the mall, we created a City of Lawrence, uh, great utility spec for water and sewer connections. Uh, in other words, the sediment erosion patrol notes referred to Ory County, and we changed those to City of Lawrence. Uh, we had some notes on there about some tree protection that are specific to Ory County that were revised. Uh, another thing that we did was, we actually provided an easement from in the Phase Two plan as part of that plan to record, which she will be able to get to near the end of the project. So, behind Phase Two, you know, we're creating the, the big pond. And what we're doing is, that'll be perfect. We added an easement so that, uh, not that the development group, whatever, not finished the development, but if they did, that the ability to get in and maintain the pond would still be preserved, and we provided an access that doesn't have to go through the existing lots that would be created, so that there would be a way to come in if, for any reason, something was to happen, that this would protect both the development and the city in case something was to happen, as well as the adjacent residents. And we added a note that allowed those lots that are there to specifically have drainage access to the pond and the rights. And we've added an outfall easement over the pond, where the pipe is at the very bottom. Uh, there's an outfall easement that's there now around the pipe to ensure that the ability to maintain that outfall pipe from the pond is included. So, those were some of the big changes that we did. We had addressed some of the other concerns of the previous scenario, but we did add things like streetlights at two intersections as required by city requirements with a maximum height note on there. That would be provided, as well as we added do not enter one-way, uh, no-through-traffic signage that was required within that on the main road. And then we addressed some of the acreage calculations. And that, what she was referring to is on the, the final plan, we're gonna add a note that indicates the acreage of the right-of-way so that we, she can have the three up together so that you know.
Was it railway tunnels or was that what it would be?
Uh, the utility details were all swapped out, so you can definitely see that on the plans. Five, four, three, five, six, all those detailed sheets were switched to City of Lawrence details. And as they go through, when you continue to see increased growth, we'll be happy to provide detailed drawings for you as a city to be able to have those for other people to download the standard details for them, so.
David, which one was the signage on here? Was it this one?
The signage and striping, yeah. So, that was, that added the signage at the front, as well as the lights are all up there at the North Box Road. So, if you can see, there's the location of the streetlight, there's the street address sign that's closer out by the stop bar, along with the street addressing signs. And we made sure that there were thirty-inch stop signs. And, uh, we did locate the additional fire hydrant that was there on the site. If you look at Lot Nine right in the front, that's the one driveway that's blocked differently than the other ones. That's so that we can keep the existing hydrant that's located there, which is actually on the developer's property currently, not within the easement.
Right there, I believe.
That it's down to the left, actually, it's actually on their property right there, is the hydrant.
Okay, okay.
So, that's the hydrant that covers the frontage lots. So, those were the series, there, there was just a, a series of minor notes, but we did get, we went through, I think we sat down for two and a half hours or so on Tuesday morning, and we went through every one of the comments, one by one, and made all the changes and got them back in.
Are there fountains in the pond?
Currently, there are not any fountains designed in those ponds. They all, however, have to have a minimum of six-foot depth, um, as currently designed, to make sure that you don't have a problem with turnover and water and stuff like that.
Where is Main Street? Over here? Oh, okay, okay.
And you have to get to that minimum six, that keeps the grass from growing on the bottom and helps with the overgrowth of vegetation. So, meeting the stormwater regulations requires us to go, it used to be, until, I guess, about three years ago, it's four and a half foot depth, but the standard has changed to six-foot depth minimum.
I mean, I don't know if they do a, a thing where you have to have somebody check the ponds every so often and things like that.
It'll be, it'll have to be part of the HOA maintenance covenants, and those will have to be recorded prior to, or with the adoption of, so when they go to record Phase Two, they will have to have those covenants in place and make the land subjected to those. And if they don't, they won't be able to build any permits.
Okay. Have they answered all your questions?
So, yeah, and, uh, David, what I was telling, we were just talking about, you may have touched on that.
Adding the, adding the table in there so that it gives the correct acreages for breakout of the right-of-way, the lots, the open space, so that she can make sure that they all add up to the required acreage.
Okay.
And that'll be, I would make that one of your conditions, because that is literally something that's put on the final plan. And of course, in order to do this, we would either have to have all the infrastructure constructed prior to recording the final plan, or we would have to provide a financial guarantee, which would have to go through the approval process.
Okay.
And that'll be up to the vertical builder to decide which route they wanna go with.
Okay.
And, uh, if they choose to go and get it recorded prior to, we would have to provide a cost estimate certified by our engineer to the town for their approval and review.
Okay.
And we did have street names, that was the other two. So, we got two street names that have been reserved, Bowery County, uh, Moonlit Oak Drive, and Silver Grove Lane.
Silver Grove Lane.
And both have been approved by Bowery County and reserved on their list. They're waiting for you guys to give the thumbs up on the plan, and then they'll put them on their planning commission meeting for final approval to reserve them. So, nobody else can have them, they'll be ours. I think they're pleasant meetings at least.
So, and that was, so, all right, I'm seeing on here real quick. So, that was what we were talking about, similar to like we did with Meadow Walk, the subdivision being named Meadow Walk. That main drive-in is called Meadow Walk Loop, they wanna do something else, but for consistency, and it's, you know, you're turning into Meadow Walk, so you want to turn onto Meadow Walk Loop. This is similar to, this is Silver Oak Cotages.
So, we're trying to stay within that, Moonlit Oak.
That's good.
And Silver Grove.
Yeah, you got one word.
So, you know which community you're in when you get in there.
That's good.
And we did supply the variance application because, for the open space. So, obviously, any conditions for this, there's, we either, if we wanna keep it as it is, we have to get the variance. If we don't get the variance, we'll just have to add it into the lots. I still would prefer to have them as a separate piece of open space, because I think it will lead to better meetings and more traffic, but, so.
And, and clarify that, that's because your open space definition?
Currently, the, the definition of a lot does not exclude open space from being a buildable lot. And so, therefore, even though it's open space and we won't be able to build on it, it does, it has to be meeting the six thousand square foot lot size.
Got it.
Which obviously doesn't currently, it's, it's much smaller than that, because it's designed for landscaping, and not for like an amenity center or something like that.
Right.
And that's where we were saying, just need the clarification, because we, we'd be violating our own ordinance by creating a non-conforming lot for that zoning district.
Gotcha.
So, the issue being, currently, our zoning ordinance doesn't provide any, any type of dimensional standard of any form whenever it comes to creating an open space parcel. So, being we don't have that, then we're creating parcel, we have to, it has to meet the, the minimum requirements for that district.
Okay. Is that something that down the road we might need to address?
That was one of the notes that we're adding to.
To the list?
Yep, of things that need to be corrected or clarified.
Clarified, yeah.
And then it's gonna be a continual process as the town continues to experience growth. You're going to come across things in your regulations that never got used before, so.
Yep, okay. So, does anybody have any questions? So, are you looking for an approval from us or a recommendation?
So, with this, you would be approving.
Okay.
You're only gonna recommend if it's something that City Council has the ultimate decision on.
Okay.
So, whenever it comes to plating actions, so, you're doing an approval. Or conditional approval.
Okay.
Or, let's go back to the drawing board topic.
So, with that little piece we just talked about, do we have to make that part of the condition?
The, for the variance? So, yeah, that's what we were talking about last week, was you're basically doing a conditional approval. In this case, what we just discussed was approval for the prelim plans on the condition that, that that table is added for prelim Phase Three, the acreage, calling out the wetlands, the ponds, the right-of-ways, all that with it, just for clarification on the plan. And then can, the approval being contingent on zoning appeals approving the variance request.
When do they meet?
Um, so, because of the notice having to be, having to be ran for that, it'll end up being the December tenth, is what I'd say. Yeah, December tenth meeting. We don't have enough time between now and what would be their November meeting to, to do.
Okay.
And the option is if we don't get that, we're just going to remove the open space and incorporate it into the lots.
Okay. Okay. Do I hear anything from anybody, any kind of motion or?
I got a motion to move forward with what you just wrote down.
The conditional approval, prelim plan, contingent on the zoning commission approving the variance, and whatever Ellen Smith Meredith said. You got on the table.
Adding the table to identify the acreages on the Phase Three plan.
Adding the table, yeah, adding the table. Okay, do I hear a second?
One second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye, or do you wanna go through the asking people?
Let's do roll call, just because, all right, and then Eric was, he made the motion.
Yeah.
All right, so. Linda Morrison.
Yes.
Christopher Spivey.
Yes.
Eric Milam.
Yes.
Chad Bennett.
Yes.
And the others are absent, so we have four.
Okay, so we're good. I'm sorry, I didn't ask if you all wanted to speak. Do they speak?
I got a question, so, being it's going through zoning, can't get meeting until December, does it have to come back here again?
No, no, it's, this is the approval, so, once we get the approval of zoning, it will be approved.
So, we're still dead in the water till December?
Unless you remove the open space.
Because right now, that's all you're waiting on, is the open space.
Correct, and, and, I mean, the other option is to approve it whether we get it or not. And then if they grant it, we do it. If we don't, then we'll be, as you can see, it's just gonna be added to the lots.
I'm just over two years into this, last month.
Right. Is there, is there any permits waiting as far as pulling anything with DOT for Phase Three?
DOT has approved the other nine lots and the drive, we just can't go to the next step for land disturbance.
We had the DOT on Phase One Wednesday.
Yesterday.
And they won't cut us loose on anything until they hear from y'all, so I'm dead in the water.
Okay. So, can we not prove it with the condition that they can move forward?
That's what I'm thinking is, we can do like we did with, um...
We did that with a...
We did it with another one.
Yeah.
Was we did that with the conditions.
Yeah, we can't bring a final plan back anyway.
Right, so we could go that route with it as well.
Because it's not creating the lot until the final plan itself is brought back to per recorded.
I thought we'd done that, sorry.
My position is, this would make it so much more attractive with the owners and the city. And I understand that it's not written in, and we don't wanna break regulation, but if we feel like we're gonna get it, then can we approve it? Or I'll just take it out, then come back presenting later on, get an approval today? Just, and it's like another sixty days of...
Well, the only thing that we can get today is a preliminary approval anyway. We can't have a final plot approval until, you know, the financial guarantee or the infrastructure is in, so. Either way, it's gonna be a preliminary approval.
It's just the DOT.
The preliminary approval will get us the DOT.
And that's what I'm thinking, because, I mean, I, I really don't see any, any opposition with the variance request that's made, because really, it's, we're requesting for them to give us a set of rules, so to speak, for open space dimensions, which will help us in the future with some other ones as well, until we get that rewrite done. The, the only other condition is very minor. I mean, it, it's, it's literally taking the information and typing it into a table, adding the table on that last prelim. But we're not, we're not too final. So, final plan approval would be another step that would come back to y'all later.
But at least if they get approval, they can go to the next step with the county.
Correct, this is just approving the construction plans.
Right.
It's not going to change the construction, whether we have the open space there in mind in terms of the infrastructure.
Right.
It's just a matter of whether the trees are on an easement or in the lot, or on a separate piece of open space.
So, I believe from, from what we've seen, what we went over this week with it, that I don't see any reason that you shouldn't at least give a conditional approval with the conditions that were stated for this, for the prelim approval.
Right.
That's just pretty much.
So, we need to have another motion?
I mean...
Can we just make a correction or addition?
I think it was a conditional approval already.
Yeah, I'm saying our approval was already conditional.
Right.
So, I'm, Gray and I have been under, under the weather, so this is all going past my brain, trying to reconcile the two. We've already done a conditional approval pending BZA.
And that table being added to that page?
So, if we strike it and do it over, it's not only gonna change anything. We've already done a conditional approval.
So, can they get their application?
All we need is a letter saying that you've given us conditional approval.
And that's what we did before with it, so, as long as I have that in the minutes with it.
Okay.
There's a letter that I did for, was it for Phase One? Maybe it was for Phase One.
You gave it Phase Two, but they want, they want Phase Two and Phase Three, right?
As far as the...
That's right, we'll just need the same thing with two with three, so we can provide that.
Yeah, so as long as y'all have given that, and you voted for approve the prelim with those conditions, then we just get that in a letter format, is what they're needing.
Could you read back the motion you recorded, please?
So, I've got Eric was making a motion, Linda clarified it was a conditional approval for contingent on zoning appeals approving the ordinance, variance, and the table being added to.
So, it sounds like that's exactly what he needs.
And if, once we get that letter, we'll be able to do it.
When do you think you can get them the letter?
Yeah, Thursday.
Today's Thursday?
It is Thursday, right?
Yes.
Today's Thursday. Probably either tomorrow or Monday.
Okay, okay.
I don't, I don't wanna set myself on Friday, just because you never know what's gonna happen on Friday.
Right, it's Halloween, but... So, you're gonna shoot for Friday, and if that doesn't happen, it'll definitely be Monday?
Because I've already got it drafted from, with the approval from Phase One. So, it's, it's, a lot of it's the same information, just double checking numbers and the conditions that were stated for that approval.
Okay, so is that?
That will get us what we need to do, so they'll allow us to put the driveway tiles in for Phase Two.
We want progress. Okay, so we don't need to do anymore, whatever.
Not unless anybody else from the public, if Chris wants to speak, we're done with this part.
Thank you very much, and thank you for showing up and you were on the way.
I'm better now, but I had my head still.
No, I thank y'all too personally for taking the extra time for me and for the project to come here again. You didn't have to, I didn't have to, very important, you came on Tuesday, appreciate all of you guys, thank you very much.
Okay, well, we appreciate your time too.
Thank you very much.
And Linda, just clarification, and I, because I did leave this slide in, was, um...
Yep.
This is, this essentially is the reason for the variance request being made.
Right.
Is because the way that we define a lot, well, lot, lot of record, property, tract, parcel, they all mean the same thing.
Yep.
So, if we're creating an open space lot or an open space parcel.
Gotcha.
It's still having to meet those requirements. That was the, the big reason for that variance that we needed.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, okay, um, the next item is staff report. Did you wanna give us any information?
So, the biggest thing is, um, because we're getting close to the end of the year, you know, at the end, whenever we're getting there, before January first, we have to get a schedule of regular meetings approved for the coming year. I'm going to shoot for having that ready whenever we have our regular November meeting.
Okay.
So, this one, and that's why I added on here, was just touch base, meeting time and date still works, the six PM for Thursday, unless it's a holiday like November, December, and I'm gonna adjust.
That's my water reminder, sorry. It overrides volume.
So, that, that was the other thing, we just went on the touch base. Really, my note to ask y'all, are you still good with four Thursday at six o'clock?
I think for the most part, it's worked out for everybody.
Okay, and I think that kinda helps too, because council said at six, y'all were set at six, zoning appeals, so it's, any board-type meeting is usually at six o'clock, a regular one.
Yeah, sorry. The only thing I'd like to say about our meetings is, if we don't have an agenda that comes up where there's somebody who's wanting approval and stuff, is there any way we can develop a list of things that we really need to address that came from our planning thing? You know, like the ordinances, remember you said there was some ordinance that need to be updated? And, do you know what I'm saying?
It wouldn't be the first thing to have, just a backup list, say, for some reason, but we don't have anything on the agenda or one thing. I'm sure we could fill out an hour, we need to have discussion on.
Right, yeah.
So, are you saying that you want to have, even if we only have one item on an agenda, just so we've got that routine with it?
Well, in my opinion, we've come across some things that kinda stalled us, because we didn't have, we needed to update it.
Okay.
Or we needed to address it. And, um, what do y'all think?
I agree, I've been thinking about that for a while, who, who gets the ball rolling on letting us sort some of this stuff out?
Yeah, what was it, we did the twenty-year or ten-year plan? We came up with a list of stuff.
The plan with the...
That, you know, I mean, it's pretty much kinda looking at that book and kinda, that you gave us that we need to update, just a suggestion.
Yeah, yeah, and I think, um, was I talking to you about that today, this morning, I think, about with, um, like the ordinance overhaul or rewrite with it?
Yeah, that, we were talking about that.
And, so that, that's gonna be a really lengthy process, as far as it's gonna be very comparable to whenever we were doing the comp plan update. So, we're probably gonna have to somewhat break that down, probably by article, is how it's laid out, or chapter, group of it.
Yep.
Um, I will get with Lee as far as to try and get a schedule with that. We may even need to do some special meetings where it's more of a discussion workshop versus, you know, action being taken.
Right, yeah.
So, we may need to add some with it. Um, and those can be, those don't have to go on this schedule of meetings, those, those specials can be called as long as we can get everything out, you know, twenty-four hours before, if we have something with that.
Yeah.
These are just like our regular items and applications submitted that needs to go to y'all for discussion, for review. That table is what we're looking for with those meetings, but, yeah. I'll get with Lee, and we'll try and work out something for getting, kinda break that down, like we did with the comp plan.
Okay, so maybe next month when we meet, you can give us an update on that, you meet with him?
Yes, yes.
Okay, is there anything else, Meredith, on staff report?
Um, I have nothing, other than reminder of the same city council meeting at six o'clock Monday. City Hall will be closed, um, November eleventh for Veterans Day, and the twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth for Thanksgiving. Your next scheduled, next regularly scheduled meeting is November twentieth, and that's where I'm gonna try and bring back that schedule of meetings, similar to how that's laid out with those deadlines.
Right.
For approval for the twenty-twenty-six year, so we can get that tucked away.
Okay.
Pretty much.
Sounds good, okay. Um, so, next is public and press comments. Do y'all have anything else you wanted to talk? Mr. Paget, would you like to say anything?
No, I'm just, just here to educate myself a little bit.
Thank you for coming, I appreciate that. Okay, um, if there's no other comments by anybody, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, Chris makes the motion, who's second?
Second.
Second, okay. Eric's second, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, thank you very much for coming, appreciate, thank you. Chad, Chad, Chad.